According to the big clock, let's call that, let's call the meeting to order here of the regular Pownell Planning Commission meeting, Tuesday, August 16th, 2016. I would ask you all to take a quick look at the agenda and then if you don't see any additions or subtractions or anything else, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda and then we'll begin to move through it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, first bit of business is to look at the regular meeting of July 19th. I'll read it for editorial content, but that's about all since I wasn't here. By the way, I thought you were the only one who could read Nelson's writing. How did Sid ever make down out?
I had to help him a little.
Oh, okay. All right, you interpret it. Need a minute more? I'll ask for a motion, approve these July 19th minutes.
Wait, I gotta correct it.
Okay, what you got?
On the back page, I wrote, "You were here," so Sid has to go there.
Oh, yeah. So Vice Chair, right? Get my name out. So, we can approve them, but Sid can't sign them. He'll sign them next time he's here, correct? So, once again, I'll ask for a motion to approve those with Sid's name on it versus mine since I wasn't here. We have a motion? Second? Any other discussion on the July 19th minutes? If not, all those in favor? Any opposed? I abstain. Moving right along, we'll take a look at the special work session minutes of August 2nd. We'll approve them first and then discuss some of the, some of the items in there when we talk about the town plan work. Wasn't a terribly long meeting, was it, that one?
No, good, no.
The only thing I'll, I'm not sure we need to correct this, Julie. I know we need an introduction section. I didn't have plans on asking him that. I did talk to Mike. I had agreed to write the introduction section, so. So you might just cross that out. You obviously need an introduction and basically it's a, it's part of the statement of objectives and goals.
And were you also going to speak to Mike Batchor about just finishing up everything as a generality?
Yeah, he's not doing that, but I did, but we'll talk about that under town plan work.
Okay, so that doesn't have to be, okay.
Wait, let me see. Mike Batchor is going to speak with Mike Batchor, BCRC review and see if we actually need the following sections. Yeah, so we can leave that as that and then act the introduction when we work on it, then you can.
Yeah, I don't care if you want to leave it. That's why I said, I'm not sure you need to strike it.
Because there are sections that we still have to do.
You know, the introduction technically is the, you know, the goals and the objective section.
Right.
But it serves as an introduction to what follows, so. No, we clearly need that. It's number one of the requirements. Population, I'll tell you what I found out there. And the map till the bylaws. So here I said, we'll talk about that. At this section, I started talking about it. All right, I'll look for a motion, approve these Tuesday, August 2nd, special work session meeting. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Say nay. The ayes have it. It carries. Madam Secretary, if you'd like to have us have a look at the mail.
Okay, mail. I have the VLCT newsletter, which I just did, oh, printed today, which actually has a couple interesting things, but I don't remember if I sent it to you guys yet or not.
I think.
Okay, so I'll email it to you because there's a lot of things in here about open meeting, met the new laws and stuff like that, so I'll email that.
Good, so we don't really need to pass it around unless somebody wants to take a look at it.
Right, just in case.
Okay.
Then we got a VLCT newsletter for the town fair highlights, which is October 5th and 6th. There's that. And then I have the State of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Waste Water System and Potable Water Supply Permit for, sorry if I say their name wrong, it's an Eric Despard and a Michelle Flavniak, Flavniak on Niles Gold Road, Niles School, House Road. So that one. And then I got a letter from Kenlin, again, I was gonna say their name wrong.
Kenlin.
Schweber, Fosse &amp; Doss.
Yep.
It's the Dean Road GLC Solar 500 watt, 500 kilowatt group netter and project. So that's that one.
What's it saying in a nutshell? We can all read it, but.
It wasn't.
Is it addressed to us or is it a copy to us?
No, it's a, it's a copy to us, however, I thought was kind of interesting, like, it is, they filed, they, of course, had to do with the Public Service Board. It's all in reference of the matter, please find the rare threatened endangered species on Dean Road. Remember, they had to do the report.
And that's, that's Kenlin's response to it.
There's quite a lot of plants and stuff.
Endangered.
There's that. And then I have another thing from this.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Before we leave here, can I have a copy of this letter, the whole letter? All right, I want to go through that. Remind me to talk about this a little bit when I talk to about Michael Batchor.
Okay. Then I have another State of Vermont Department of Environment and Conservation Drinking Water and Ground Protection, and again, it's for the Eric Despard and Michelle Flavniak on Niles Gold Road. There's that one. Then today's mail.
More for them?
Yes, yeah, because they always do state water and.
Oh, right, right, right.
Their drinking water and state. Then lo and behold, I got, of course, today because I wasn't in. It's the application for the Blue Sky Tower, LCC.
Yeah.
And new singular wireless.
Good, would you read that and then break it down so all of us can understand it?
So here's the application.
Wow.
So, if anybody wants it, it'll go up there.
So that's an Act 248 application.
It'll go up there with the other one right there, so I'll know, let's swap that one out and.
That's the application that Blue Sky has to fill out?
Yes.
For Act 248 from the state, for the Public Service Board.
But I mean, I keep it, like I said, it'll be in my work space.
That's good.
And that's all the mail I have.
Did Julie remind me, did we write a letter of support for this project?
Not yet.
Okay.
I don't remember, I know he came down with the application, which we didn't have at the time. Then we mentioned about doing the balloon and all that, but I don't, we never wrote a letter.
I don't think we asked him for anything else, and I think the consensus was that where it was cited, we were in favor of it.
Right, but we didn't actually write a letter or anything.
Oh, we were waiting. You know what we were waiting for? Different vistas, they were going to look at it, like from Shannon's deck and places like that, if I recall, and then get back to us on that, weren't they?
Um, yeah, the balloon test, right?
Yeah.
Or figure out where to photograph.
And I don't know if the results are in there from the balloon. I don't know. It may be in there somewhere.
All right, I want to look at that.
But I don't.
It's gonna be here.
Okay, yeah.
Take a look at it.
It wasn't from my house, it was from.
Okay.
I said from Bill's house.
Yeah.
Because you can't see it from, if you're on the other side of Route 7, then you can see it.
Right. But it still didn't seem to be any more objectionable, a little bit taller maybe than the one that's there, but more modern equipment, things like that, the bulk of the infrastructure and roadways there.
Right.
And, and they were gonna build a couple of new buildings, service buildings, but it didn't seem to me to be anything that we were worried about.
There's a couple pages of it.
They were also relocating the footprint.
I couldn't believe.
Yeah, a little to the left.
So they were concerned with more visibility. They weren't saying there would be more, but that's what they were trying to understand.
Right, so I'll look through it and see if he's gotten back to us. This obviously came to the town and this is our copy of it.
Yes, that's our copy.
Which they now, any citing issues, they have to keep us in the loop on, so.
Then another piece of mail stuck together.
Good, thank you, Julie. Anything else in the mail?
I don't know, he's looking at something. What do you have there?
No, that's it.
Is that part of it?
The solar, the solar piece?
Yeah.
No, that's all my mail I have.
Thank you.
It's good.
All right, we don't have any public comment tonight. We have no guests. Under other business, though, we're looking for another ZA log and the ZA has not accounted for it.
No, I got thinking after I did it, he said he wasn't gonna do it only every two months now.
And I think we agreed with that, didn't we?
I think so.
Yeah, is there?
I don't think we.
I was gonna say.
But I think he said that's what he wanted to do, but I don't think he ever thought about it.
Well.
I'm thinking, well, because, I was thinking because he wasn't here for the July one, we had a copy of it.
Yeah.
And Sid read it and then we asked for it to be typed because, so we can comprehend it, or so to speak, or have a better hard copy.
Right.
So that when it's copied, we could actually understand it.
There was discussion about the two months, though, and I don't recall any strenuous objections to it.
No, because it.
Because he also said, "I'm a phone call away. If you need clarification of enforcement or anything else, I'm a phone call away. Just, you know, get ahold of me, I'll respond to any email or telephone call," so.
Right.
And I think he talked about that in light of the fact that he's on the school board as well.
So September.
With all of his meetings, that to be able to make this regular meeting is difficult for him for most of the year.
So it'll be September, November.
But I'm glad you're doing that because we should.
That way out.
We should probably email Nelson and say, you know, "Per your request, we'll be accepting reports, your zoning administration log on the following months."
Okay.
You're typed.
Typed. You're typed log.
Log, okay.
See Julie for typing. Okay, just kidding.
He has, remember, he said he could have assistant, remember, he was talking a person, so. Yeah, no, it's not gonna be me.
He's gotta, yeah, he has to have the ability to get that done.
These work so well together, I know.
Yeah.
I do work with him when I.
Yeah, they do.
I know, it seems like you do.
I do a lot of his work.
One of those love-hate relationships, I don't know, yeah, like in the movies.
Yeah, I can't be wound on it right now.
There are no ZA issues that we need to discuss tonight, though, I don't think. Are there any, I almost hate to bring it up, are there any new enforcement issues or problems that we should be concerned with, that we should then get ahold of him before his report?
The only thing that I have, sorry, I didn't mean to do that. The only thing I have an issue with is that he needs to be consistent, consistent with everyone. Now, he gave somebody a permit for a garage as a business. It didn't come to the DRB. The last person that tried to do a garage in North Pownell had to go through hoops and hops and everything. So, he already approved the permit, gave them the permit.
Oh, wow.
And there's nothing we can do for.
Were there extenuating circumstances in the one that had to go to the DRB, or would you say it was identical in footprint and size and everything and setbacks?
It should still, if it's a business, a business permit is supposed to go to the DRB.
Both of these were business permits. And he granted the second one without it. All right, well, we'd certainly like to.
So I mean, that's my only thing, and I, that's something him and I have gone round and round with over the years, is that if you're gonna do it for one person, it needs to be the same for everybody else.
If that first time he's here, Julie put that on the agenda and let's ask him that under his report.
Consistency, will that work?
If he'll remember it. Consistency, see Julie, is what I'm gonna say.
Is this the forum for that, about the ZA?
Yeah, it's okay to ask him that. I mean, if he's, if he's issuing, taking and issuing permits and we have a question, one of our board members raised the question, so we have every right to ask him that, I'm sure Nelson would agree with that.
Only because there are people in town that, and we've had complaints on, like, no, Mr. Gray. I mean, we've had complaints for him where it's, it has to be for, the same for everybody.
Okay.
And that's what.
That's first I'd heard of it, that it's not, but we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it. I mean, that's, that's part of him reporting to us, so.
But other than that, I haven't heard of anything.
Nothing else going on?
Yeah.
So with that exception, we can wait until he shows up and that would be in September's. And he, I think, is going to come to the work session meetings, right, because of the conflict with the school board? That's what he's been doing. He hasn't been to this meeting in a long time because of school board, I don't know if the school, the school board meet in the summertime? They don't get it off, like, students and teachers.
Yeah, I saw something in the paper that they had a meeting this week or last week or something, so, yeah.
Or we can have, where he can, we can change his logs to the work sessions.
Sure, yeah. Which he's done, he's just brought it in sometimes, but it's not on the agenda, that's the, so we would have to.
And we can make it.
Right.
That way, if we choose to.
So when you email him the dates that he's to report and his type to report, would you also ask him?
If he'd prefer.
If he'd prefer the alternate Tuesdays so that we can add it to the agendas?
I have a question. Once the town plan, I mean, once the plan piece is done, though, we're not gonna be meeting twice a month, are we?
Uh-oh, we should be because our town.
Oh, we are?
Because our zoning bylaws are due.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's a good question, though. We'll see, when are they due?
They're actually due this year.
Okay, well, that, I don't think that's quite as strict. I don't know that for a fact.
Yeah.
But.
Our town plan have, our bylaws have to match the town plan.
Well, see, there's gonna be changes automatically in the bylaws and subdivision, possibly subdivision regs as soon as we get approval on this. I don't think we'll have approval on this after we're done with the BCRC's help and finishing up these dangling ends here and then the public hearings, et cetera. My guess is it's gonna be early next year before we're, we're into it. So it'd become critical that we know the deadline for the bylaw changes, if we're up against one, Julie, if you could look into that for me, please. And, and also the deadline for this, and I probably have it written down in 12 different places, but do you know it offhand?
I don't.
It's the end of 17, right, I think?
Yeah.
Or somewhere in 17.
Yes, because we, yes.
Would you also check on that for me, please? Just so that we, we don't wanna miss by a week or something, where we have to, because we don't have the ability to roll over the old plan anymore, we've already done that once, now we have to produce. So, to be determined on the other Tuesday thing. I mean, for years, we didn't. And in fact, only a couple times can I remember meeting twice a month, and that was around when we started working on the town plan. We backed off to, to once a month when we hired, we thought for some reason it was gonna be easier once we hired Land Works. And, well, no, our fault, not theirs, I mean, we should have been here, we didn't take that much time off, we got right back to every other week.
Right, we've been doing this for quite a while.
So, so we'll, I, I think it's.
Yeah, but it wasn't because we didn't have, we had other things at the time, like the racetrack had huge plans, so.
Right.
It got kind of set aside, so it wasn't like we just.
Well, things kept getting set aside, didn't it?
I mean, it wasn't because we just laid back.
The zoning administrator three years ago.
Right, it wasn't because we just laid back and didn't do anything.
No, we had to change bylaws.
We had big projects for the racetrack and the biomass and.
We had to change bylaws and we were in the middle of not only changing the bylaws, but combining the bylaws and the subdivision regs in one book with a much more user-friendly guide. That took some time, it really and truly did, and it pushed off our ability to complete the town plan on time. That's why three or four, three years ago, I think, we rolled over the old town plan.
Right.
But we hadn't, you still have to have public hearings and everything else even to do that. But my understanding is you only get one shot at that, you can't just keep saying.
And we did.
We like it the way it is.
We had to work on some village destination and stuff like that, so it's not.
Which is, yeah.
Which we have to work on again, too.
Yeah.
So it's not like, I mean.
It's part of what I talked to Mike.
We've been busy, it's not just like, oh, we didn't feel like meeting and we're just laid back, not doing anything. It just, we were honestly working and just.
But, but we'll see how smoothly it goes.
Boy, did you not get an answer to your question?
I told her to be determined.
I thought, I guess coming in, I thought that it, I thought that the extra work meeting was for the town plan, I don't know who told me that.
It is, that's how, that was the, that's how it originated, Shannon. But, but now if, you might all remember me asking you, as you work on your sections, to reflect to the current bylaws and figure out which bylaws, what action plans are needed, what needs to be changed, because that, that's a fairly arduous procedure as well, which requires changing all the ones that we need to change, going to the public with it, having our public hearings, going to the select board, their public hearings, and then back to us for more public hearings, et cetera. So we may have a fair amount of work. I think these are the biggest changes in the handful of town plans that Pownell's ever had. And my guess is it's impacted those bylaws and, you know, things like billing inspectors and certificates of occupancies and things like that. We're gonna have to get serious and roll up our sleeves about all of those things. So my guess, as I say, it's to be determined, I, I'm pretty sure we're gonna be still meeting twice a month for the foreseeable future, like till Jim's about 97 or so.
What am I doing?
Okay? Totally acknowledge him.
So, along with that, we have public hearings for the town plan we're putting forward.
Correct, once we approve it all.
Right, once, okay. And once we get their blessing, then we have to do what?
We have to send it to the select board and the select board reviews it and they have.
Two public hearings.
They have two public hearings.
They have two public, we have two public hearings and they have two public hearings?
Yeah, in ours generally, they're two days in a row or separated by a week.
Right, but you can do them two days in a row.
And we need a quorum to, to talk to the public, we have to call a meeting to order, it's an official meeting.
It's gotta be warned and all that.
It's gotta be warned and everything else.
To library, school.
Right, right. So.
We've done that in the past.
We've done.
We've had it at the library or we've been at the school.
If, if in fact, we think there's gonna be a crowd. We've also had them here and not a single person showed up. And what I think was the, the most sweeping changes of our bylaws prior to us consolidating them, and it came on the heels of, of the biomass project. And we changed a lot of bylaws, and when we did, I fully expected this place to be full because it was for prior meetings, not a person. The first night, so I said, okay, they didn't know about it. Second night, not a person. All the controversy, and everybody has a chance to speak out on this, and nobody, nobody came in. Anyway, let's keep talking about the town plan work here. Julie, I see you got something from Southern Illinois Public Library?
This is from, an update for the library and it, I have, it's several pages long.
Mm-hmm.
But it is, actually has really, really good.
Very good.
Information. I hadn't gotten anything else back yet, but I'll double, like I said, I've been emailing and just doing reminders that it's due, so I figured as we are going still, because we still have a couple sections, that I'll keep doing my reminders to get there.
Yeah, who are you waiting on?
I'd like to rescue and then my historic one.
Yeah. I asked Mike if he could help with those.
And I gotta double check with Sid on the recreation because he was re-typing it or was gonna do more.
Is he excused tonight, by the way?
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm going to assume, yes, him and Ronnie, because I didn't do my babysitting and remind everybody.
Oh, okay.
So I'm assuming, yes, that I will give them the benefit of the doubt because I didn't email.
Everybody gets a free pass if there's no reminder, huh? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Only the diehards who have this penciled in every two weeks.
Actually, I was kind of impressed, believe it or not.
As many showed up as we did? Yeah, how about it? And pleasantly, pleasantly surprised that we had a meeting.
Email, and like I said.
You emailed the last one the day before.
I did elections and, and then like I said, I was doing charts at the doctor's office and I realized what today's date was.
But, but going forward, going forward, you'll have, you'll get back to that.
Yes.
That great habit you had about getting even the minutes.
Yes, the minutes were lovely emailed.
Because it takes us then two seconds.
Right.
Well, and you can formulate questions and things like that.
Yes, I love.
So, all right, your summer vacation's over.
It's over, it's over. No more excuses.
How was it, was it good?
Yeah, yeah, election, yes.
Election supported.
14 hours at the firehouse for 300 people, yes.
What do we do with this information?
We just want, I just want to, to just see if this is okay, that, you know, if we just read it and we don't have to do it today, that this is gonna replace in the section of the bylaws that we, or the town plan that we have, oh, it's section, I don't even know what section it is.
Page 33, 7.6.
That we know about it, I think that, you know, we have to go with what she gives us for information because.
I don't even know.
I certainly don't know enough to make any changes to it.
No, that's why I asked them to do that, so exactly.
Well, you compare it to the old one.
Right, I mean, there is.
Page 33 of your, 33.
I mean, it's just a little section that we had, but.
All right, why don't we do this? For our assignment, next time, why doesn't everybody read this?
See, right here is our section that we had.
Reflect on the old one, think about what we need from this great job that she did down there. What's her name, though, the head of the library?
Linda Hall.
Yeah, she's terrific, by the way. And, and let's, let's reflect on what she wrote and what we want to use, not use, or do we just use the whole thing when we have a section on this? Which is gonna, which falls under the utilities and facilities.
I was gonna say, all that stuff goes, yes.
Okay.
Down there and.
I, I think it's pretty close to in volume what she did the last time, it's just she's got bigger typed here versus what's typed in there, so it's gonna equal about the same amount of space.
That's why I could read it.
I already shrunk it down to our book size so that it's, and I just have to do my numbers, but other than that, I have a question if we're done with the library section. I was reviewing.
We are, aren't we? We're done with the library section.
The land use section, and I had a couple of questions because I had to go back and The land use section, and I had a couple of questions because I had to go back and change my numbers. And I don't remember, but what I did was, and I have a question on a couple of pages, which we did. I know you guys probably don't have it in your packets, but I, I did all of Sid's edits because Sid gave me that, gave them to me. However, he didn't save the, he didn't transfer over the whole thing, so I had to go back through to edit. So it was a lovely chore, but I did it, but then I have a question, uh, for say the flood hazard. There would be in our land use, it was three point three four.
And the old one?
Flood hazard, and he did all the corrections to everything. But my question is, and his, he wrote in little quote things. There says substitute new flood resilience provision. So my thing is now because we have already done section fifteen, we already have.
Flood resilience plan.
Resilience plan, which is numerous pages, am I supposed to, like, with Rick doing, yeah, Rick did the route three forty-six, I had to put that in the other section. So am I putting a note with this section, like a subsection saying that? You're gonna, we're gonna reference the flood resilience and give the section number? Or am I combining all of the flood section, which is? My flood is all of these pages with the map, you know that, so that is.
Well, they clearly.
Fifteen pages.
They clearly speak about each other, don't they? I mean, the, the hazard of existing structures there, the new rules and regulations, um, in the flood resilience program. They are, as I understand it, for the most part, the exact same thing. So Sid says refer to the new flood resilience program in there or, uh, section in his fine print.
He's just says substitute new flood resilience. So does that mean I'm taking this section, the here, and then take the flood resilience from there to put it in our land use? But then if you go to your Bible, so you swear of, what page is that, one oh something?
The one the state wrote mandates that we follow, that one.
Yes, we have. Flood resilience is number twelve, which you gotta have a whole section.
Correct, which we do.
Right, which technically would be the thirteen, but then we have the land use plan. So am I to just say in our land use plan that where it says two point three flood hazard reference?
Yes, right.
Section.
Yes, I, listen, I'll, I'll read it to make sure, but I think what you can do is list it.
But to take out all this verbiage and just.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Have my little square thing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Wanted to double check, so I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, because things have changed so much, haven't they, in the last several years with the.
Oh, God, yes.
Uh, where the, the state is now mandating a resilience plan.
Okay, so.
For, for every town, not just ours.
All right, so I can delete.
All right.
I mean, there, there are some explanations in, in this, uh, small section of flood hazard areas.
Yeah.
That hopefully it explains it in the new, it's not just the new information, but it, it explains.
Oh, that's outdated here.
Well, some of the facts are outdated, but some of the needs are the same.
What somebody, what somebody has to do is they have to look and make sure that the information that's in that part of the, uh, uh, land use section, uh, can now be eliminated or referred, reference to the flood resilience section. That's all.
I think it's in here.
Yeah, I mean, if they're saying the same thing.
If they're saying the same thing.
All you have to do, if for some reason in land use, you have to list something regarding, see, the, the flood hazard plan was much simpler. When we did this seven or eight years ago, we hadn't had the big flood either, and we hadn't had all the new maps and the, the new FEMA stuff. So my guess is it's completely outdated reference of a flood hazard plan in the, uh, land use section. In favor of a standalone flood resilience plan mandated by the state in that Bible that I swear by all the time. How'd I say that pretty clearly?
Did it.
Every, every now and then, a losing moment. I don't know what happened, surprise yourself too. Remember what I had for breakfast.
And we also talked about with all maps, if I'm not mistaken, we were going to reference them at the end anyway.
Right, and we're gonna.
And not intersect, not put them with the sections, but just have them all in one area.
And the flood resilience, that's exactly right, and probably in the entire thing I talked to Mike about.
However, that was the other thing though, cause if, because she did those little maps, I have to honestly show you. This is our new FEMA map.
You're saying she and Natalie?
Right, Natalie did FEMA maps.
But Natalie also said, don't worry about those little maps, put them at the end.
Right.
Use the new ones.
However. These are all them little maps.
Okay, but I, I talked to Mike about it.
A reference to this, so that, cause that's here, so I'll put it on.
You can do that too, and I think Mike has some that would be appropriate for this, uh, town plan booklet.
Another section, right, to do the same thing?
Yeah, and I got two more in our land use, so I take care of the water, all right. In our town plan, the energy section. Which was, I don't know, thirteen, so now, wait, where's my Bible?
Energy development?
Yes.
Yeah, that was a small section, wasn't it, it was under earth products removed, oh, under conservation and natural resources.
However, we did the whole section on energy, which is going to be number nine. So once again, do I, I'm gonna reference that we have it, an energy plan, which is your number nine. So am I deleting the same, like the same?
You're gonna do it the same way.
But that's what, I just wanna.
Exactly right, and, and that is all the, uh, the state requirements have changed, Julie, to necessitate that. You don't, you don't have to have a separate section.
Okay, so that's gonna be number nine, changed. Okay, then, and I can't remember, um, again, right under that section was uranium.
Right.
Where we, Sid said to delete.
I think you're gonna find back in your minutes that even though, even though that one select board member who sometimes attends this meeting said we need it in there. We decided.
We didn't.
That we absolutely did not, nor are we going to mention it, and I think you'll find that in minutes within the last year. And to be honest with you, if it's not in the energy section that Sid and I wrote, that's exactly what happened. If, if it was necessary to mention that, we would have mentioned it, but I remember a discussion about it.
Well, that's why I just, I wanted to just, because like I said, I just did all his edits and.
See people walking around, got your counters now, I can't see. Found some. Okay, stay real.
I think eight out of his land use, because I know we approved it, but then I, when I was doing the edits, I just wanted to make sure.
The, um, the main topics in the, uh, the more modern version of this under land use is, uh, your, your maps and statement of present and perspective land uses. So we talk about that in our land use section, you know, things that we want, don't want. Um, setting forth the present and prospective location, amount, intensity and character of such land uses and the appropriate timing or sequence of land development activities. So it's sticking more with land use than actual energy type things. I, I, I could see how they combined all of those at one time, um, you know? First of all, the state did mandate a, a separate energy section, so it fell under land use. And identifying those areas if any proposed for designation under sixty-seven, eight, this title, together with, for each area proposed for designation. Explanation of how the designation would further the, the plan's goals, our town plan's goals. And the goals of forty-three, forty-three oh two of this title, and how the area meets the requirement. So it's almost sticking strictly with development and land use, not anything else, not energy or, uh, flood stuff. Combine once, separate now, save you some work, right? Want it?
Yeah.
All right, any other comments about, uh, land use section and eliminating those two? And we don't need a vote on that, I think, you know, it's been discussed, so.
I know, like I said, I know we approved it, but I just wanted to just verify and, cause of trying to put all of the things together. Cause once we have them all done and the sections match, then I'll run it all on what we have and go from there.
Okay.
But you wanted to talk about.
I wanna talk about my conversation with Michael, uh, Michael Batchor. Um, who's gonna be a tremendous resource, uh, as I think we all realize, he is really a good guy, particularly smart guy. And is with us, uh, you know, a thousand percent. Um, the first thing he needs is, he needs word documents of, with the exception of the four sections that he has from Natalie Steen. He needs word documents of everything we've done. So anything that's been done, any of the sections, uh, that, that we've done. Um, corrections to the economic development element that, uh, Shannon and Rick, uh, worked on. So if that's been done, it's been approved, he'll need a word document, just, uh, put.
And I just send in it, take him it to his email?
Yes, exactly. And then anything else, as soon as you round up Sid's, uh, version of the recreation section, he needs that. So, you know, in here, in one of these you had listed, so land use section he has, housing he has, economic. Development he has, energy he has. So the, I'm taking this off of the minutes here. So anything that we decided on, municipal finances, municipal infrastructure, uh, transportation, is that done? Transportation, that was your deal, right? On time and intact too, I might add.
Once we have from here right now, other than, he's already got the flood.
Yeah, he's got flood, housing.
We have transportation, we have housing, cause that we had to go through and made the changes, not that Nat, we took out Natalie's changes. From her.
Sure, so if he, if he needs an updated version of that, get him.
Then we have the municipal infrastructure.
Mm-hmm, infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yep, and then we got, uh, energy, we had to make some changes too, then I had.
Well, I don't, I don't remember changing any of the energy ones, other than, um, we, we changed, um, we changed the, we added back in the energy coordinator.
Right, we had to add a little bit.
But that got back to Natalie.
Right.
So my guess is that that one's, uh, complete.
Yes.
Land use was not one of the required ones, by the way.
No, that's the one I just.
That we're talking about here, so when you make those changes, he'll, he'll need that, and even if they're in draft form, he said, get, get them up to me so that. I can begin to assist you, even in draft form, to make sure you guys are going in the right direction, and if he can save us some time. Uh, if we're going on a wild goose chase in a certain section, he can save us some time. So when you get a draft of it, just detail your notes in, uh, in, uh, somewhere in there. Um, and, and let him know what needs to be changed, or what we're contemplating changing or not changing. But he said he would, uh, he would come to the first work session meeting in October.
He will have our final things that we did and with no notes, when I email.
Yeah, that's fine, um.
Cause I don't like doing my minutes that way, my drafts.
Well, that's, that's fine, finalize it, it doesn't need, I mean, unless you wanna call him up and explain, you know, there's something else that has to be ultimately added to this. But he's gonna come to, uh, the first work session meeting in October and, um, um, and so. Anything we can get him in this next month and, or five weeks prior to that, Julie, that he can look at. Uh, and guide us, because, you know, he's the one who said to me, um, in working with another town in Bennington County. Who remain nameless, um, they thought this thing was gonna be wrapped up by the end of the, end of a particular year and six and a half months later. When they thought they were almost done, six and a half months later, it came to fruition. So, you know, that's why I'm asking about dates and things like that. Uh, and we, we need to get him even stuff that's not completed yet and let him start digging into it and working on it. So as you're putting together these word documents, even if we haven't voted on it yet, just say, not approved. Here's a, here's what we're working on, uh, he's asked for that, by the way, anything to guide him on that. Okay, um, maps and everything, they have, uh, he'll assist us with putting all of that together. Uh, I know those are some of the things I was supposed to talk to him about last time and. And as far as actually physically hiring him, the select board does have to do that. Um, there, I told him he was hired, he said, that's all well and good, but there is a form that, uh, that I believe he will send to Linda and attention Ronnie, that, uh, that's where they're going to agree. If money is allocated for this project, that's where they're going to agree to pay him X number of dollars on top of what they already pay him to, to do this. And as we all know, they would appreciate that and we would get more attention.
Wasn't it stated that there was five thousand dollars in the kitty appropriate for?
Yeah, and the two select board members that were at the prior meeting didn't dispute that, so I'm, I'm, I'm hoping it's still there. I mean, they're the ones that ultimately do hire him, as I said at our last meeting, so, um, although I was the only one, as I talked to the two of them about that, but they, uh, uh, they're gonna literally have to hire him. Above and beyond his normal consultative duties as B C R C member.
Uh, do we make it easier for them, and I don't mean to be facetious by providing them like a letter, we hereby, you know, in, in, in the correct verbiage, so it can just be signed?
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was. That's a good point, I was gonna get to that, and, uh, Julie and I will put a letter to, uh, and we'll address it to the select board and Ronnie. And say after having a discussion with Michael Batch, Michael Batchor, the B C I C.
B C R C.
B C I C, Bennington County Industrial Corp, Bennington Downtown Bennington Association. That one, the regional court, regional court, right, let's not send it to the B C I C.
Needs to be our, our letterhead.
Yeah, and, and they'll let them, see if we can get it to him, uh, maybe by this Thursday or next Thursday and say, uh, we've talked to him, we'll figure it out, we, if you guys would defer to Julie and I to put that together. Okay, so, yeah, he stands ready, willing and able to assist us as we write down our thoughts as to what direction this town wants to go in. With these remaining sections, he will not, under any circumstances, I told him this for the second time now, he laughed for the second time. When I said it was, people heard you say that you would just take this and run with it, that you could wrap this thing up. And he goes, no, that's not how it works, and I kinda had a little bit of a laugh over that, and, uh, he said, you have to get your thoughts down. I, you know, they're not my thoughts, they're not Michael Batchor's thoughts, they're not the V C R C's thoughts. They're, you know, he says, I'm gonna tell you if you're going on a wild goose chase, I'm gonna tell you if you're going in the right direction, all of those things. He can't lean on, you know, the, the, the fire department to produce things, so I, I asked him if he had any insight there, he said, no. He says, in fact, if you got Julie on that job, you got the right person on that job, so, he did, by the way.
Yeah, sure.
Said some nice things about you, Jules. Um, so anyway, that's where we stand with Michael, um, but we do need to get that letter, uh, you and I can hang around for a few minutes after and. Construct a letter of just a brief, hey, we talked about it, hire Mike.
Put it in Linda's box and they'll read it tomorrow night, or Thursday night. This looks like a quiet meeting.
If they can get it on the agenda, busy agenda, right? Um, so that's my update, my, my, the other charge that I have is to begin writing that first section. Uh, and I will, uh, begin to do that, I don't know, a million and one excuses why I didn't do it this time, but, uh, I will get to that. It, it really, Julie, as you and I had talked about, it, I can use the basis of the old one, actually, and change, certainly change a few things. I have acknowledgements to make in there and all kinds of other stuff, but, and then guys, you know, I mean, we're close, aren't we?
What did you say about the population?
What's that?
What did you say about the population?
I didn't ask him, that's the one thing I didn't ask him. When you send him your stuff, he might just say, by the way.
Seems how you've talked to him, what does he think of the four sections that we already did?
Yeah, I didn't have any problems with him at all, uh, he talked about, um.
So we don't have to make no changes or nothing?
So far he hasn't, he, he says, I, I reviewed him months ago, so he said, I haven't looked at him recently, I'll take him out, look at him again. Um, as long as we're talking, he asked me about the energy section and about citing, since, you know, the, the public service board is allowing us. It's the word I'm looking for, the, uh, party status on citing issues for Act two forty-eight endeavors. Um, and he asked that, uh, do you have a section in your energy that clearly states whether you like it, don't like it? And I said, we absolutely do, absolutely do, and I described it to him, I didn't have it in front of me, I described it to him from memory more than anything. Uh, he said, I'll, I'll just double check on that, he said, because that's one that if you don't have it in there, that, you know, there are legal ways around it and they. Your party status dwindles. So he also talked about, um, about the, uh, village designation. And he said, you know, that's one of the, the, the chicken and the egg deals where, and I think we knew this, I think, and you and Sid are working on it, um, that if you ha, if, if you don't have one, or you let, you let lapse as we did, in your new town plan, you need to speak in a fairly eloquent manner of what you're trying to accomplish, and you need to show maps of those areas that you want, that you're proposing for, uh, village designations. I think we do that.
Which, yeah. It's been fifty years, it's had to do it.
We did it.
Yeah, but we used to have a village designation, we let it lapse. Now he says
When we did it, right, but when we went with
Wait, learn your time, learn your time.
We did go, remember, was it Richard that I took?
Richard Amore.
He, because I showed him our original ones.
Yeah.
He wanted us to shorten it. So we went back around and took, I have more pictures, and then Sid was working
Shorten, shorten what?
He didn't like, because like, Saint North Pownell.
Yeah.
We did North Pownell for like where the old country store is, in the, the Strobridge complex, right there. But we had included the treatment plant, and then we went all the way down through, to the office.
It didn't have to be that big, okay.
He said it didn't have to be that big, or like when we did mag molding in the village down here, we didn't have to do mag molding, the mobile home park, the library, we could just go like the library to Mr. Rochester's store. We didn't need to do
Like it.
We just went like the library
Specific as that?
Yeah.
Or that
He wants it, 'cause he said it's, right, he wants it smaller.
A smaller
So
Especially if you have three of them, right.
And because, right, we're doing Pownell Center Village and North Pownell.
Okay.
And then Sid was working on the application, but I know he's been busy, so
In our amended and new sections of our town plan, where do we describe village designation? Does anybody remember offhand? Would it be under the land use section, would it, uh, be in the economics section?
Is it number eight in your golden Bible?
Yeah, where is it in, in our current one, how do we speak about it in our current one?
In our current one.
We didn't have village designation when we wrote that?
I don't think we did.
Okay, then, then here's what we need to do and
I don't think we did village designation back then. I don't think we had it back then when we started.
I saw, I showed number eight as being municipal financing.
Right, yeah, I don't, um, so I just have to find out where we would elaborate on that, that's all.
Great, but wouldn't it be number eight in your, your golden plan book? The statement indicating how the plan relates to the development trends and plans for adjacent municipalities, areas in the region developed under this title?
No, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think that's the section. I, I think it's gonna be
'Cause it talks about
It's either gonna be in the economic section, as to how, but this is more or less, uh, how it impacts, uh, surrounding areas. Number eight, statement indicating how the plan relates to development trends and plans for adjacent municipalities.
Under this title.
Right. I mean, um, let me just see, just quickly, uh, if it jumps out, present economic conditions, scale, is there
I'll look at his Bible and do something.
Well, what I'll, no, 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 what I'll do too is I'll look at Richard Amore's info that, that he, that he dropped off. What we need to do is we need to, we need to, as part of our vision, we need to let the public know that we, uh, foresee three village designations in town.
Back up. If we go back to our land use section.
Three oh.
It does on page eight, which the first thing it goes village. There are three village designations on the land use plan map.
Yeah, okay, so we have the basis of it there.
Yeah, that's the face.
Yeah, yeah, see, so, um So we did have it way back in the dark ages there, Julie.
Apparently we did, but that broke down, like, it just said we had the three villages. Yes, it's right here in Sid's.
You toured the town with somebody.
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah, I know, right, okay, okay, so
So we do have it in the land use section.
So we need to, um, we need to, uh, add, we need to incorporate, um, our the fact that we're applying for, that, that we have in our town vision, those three designations, and at the end of a section, uh, three maps showing those sections in, you know, highlighted or in color or whatever.
I wasn't here, so the guy who came to speak about that, but were those, um, like supposed to be walkable area or larger than that? That's what I was wondering.
Well, here's what it leads to, you get, you get the state to approve the designations, and then it leads to those things through, uh, grants.
Right.
All kinds of tax benefits for businesses that are in there potentially.
Right.
Um, and state money for sidewalks, uh, lights, you know, things like that. And, and we did, you know, and Sid is particularly interested in that, and, and so am I, by the way, particularly the economic impact to businesses, or the appeal to businesses possibly to move here as, as a result of having these things. And what Richard Amore did was he cited several Brattleboro and smaller areas as well, as to how they used it to help businesses in a big way. And it's there. And we had that before, and we didn't understand the full ramifications or abilities of the village designation. Where now we do, and we have people that are, besides poor Julie who kinda got it dumped in her lap all by herself uh, before, um, you know, we have some incentive now to, to walk that out. And that's why I'm thinking that, you know, maybe that's referenced in the land use section, or referenced in the economic section as well. And just brief, just a couple of, you know, things that it could lead to, that kind of vision for it and the use of it. So, yeah, I'll just double check to see if it's a standalone or whatever with Michael. And, um, and then we may have to write up a small a small section on its own, or amend a section that's already done. Or I might even call Richard.
I'll email Sid also to see how he's throwing in the application.
Yeah, and tell him to quit skipping meetings. You tell him, I'm not gonna Run me over with his car on the way to work somewhere.
I'm not afraid of him.
Those designation in town. So really, that's all I have to report tonight, guys. Um, good conversation with Michael. I think we're, you know, we're still going in the right direction here. I don't see any big curveballs coming at us, a couple of minor things like this, you know, incorporating the village designation, couple, you know, things that, you know, Julie's gonna wanna make sure is changed properly before she goes through all that work. Anything else?
No, I, I just think it's helped that, um, you know, Ronnie's been with us working.
Yeah.
We tossed it to him, uh, with the select board and
Yeah, I agree.
And Nelson both being there.
I agree.
They've been with us quite a bit.
Mm-hmm, and, and very supportive
Oh, yeah.
Of what's going on, so
It won't be like, you know, this is what's
There shouldn't be for two fifths of the select board, any major surprises. Okay?
Right.
Just good.
Yeah, alright, so Julie and I will do a letter, and, um, uh, that's it for me, and unless there's any other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute, second.
We have a first and a second, do we have any other discussion? If none, all those in favor of saying goodnight?
Goodnight sweetheart.